...the Governor Chairman, four members, Mr. Hamel, Mr. Chin, Ms. Barry, and Mr. O'Brien, Octarch, Mrs. Griffin, and the Attorney Director, Mr. Conlon. If you have a cellphone, please put it on silent or vibrate not to interrupt the meeting. You're going to talk, please step outside. If anyone's going to speak tonight, please stand up and raise your right hand. Your Attorney, please stand up and raise your right hand if you're going to speak. If you don't take a note, you will not give a speech tonight. Mr. Chin?
Do you swear to tell the truth? The whole truth ends nothing but the truth, and the matter is now in your hands. I do, but you can answer.
Thank you.
All right. You have a motion to accept the minutes passed presented from August 13th without a reading.
Second.
On the motion, stand in all favor?
Aye.
Close. Case number ZBA 2423, being a paver for a variance constructed two-story residential dwelling attached to a snug garage upon completion of demolishing existing residential dwelling on the premises number 10 St. Germain Street, Quincy. We're going to move this to October 24th, 27th.
One second.
The motion, please.
In the matter, ZBA 2423, number 10, St. Germain Street, Quincy, Mass., extended to October 22nd, 24th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. She thought he said 24. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. We have one more here. ZBA 2421, bringing out the toys for a family compliant to subdivide the parcel pertaining to a family and erect a single-family dwelling on the second parcel, leaving the original dwelling undisturbed on the premises number 265 Franklin Street. They have a motion here that wants to withdraw it all, please. On the motion, please.
ZBA 2421, 265 Franklin Street, Quincy, Mass., via the attorney, the motion is requested to continue without prejudice.
No, withdraw.
Oh, withdraw? Okay.
Second.
On the motion, stand in all favor?
Aye.
Close. And a new business, ZBA 2424, by Chi, for a variance complying to construct an attached third unit on the existing two-family home on the premises number 59 Old Colony. Representative here.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, Brian Donahue, Donahue Architects in Quincy. My client, Cody Chi, is with me, the property owner. He has chosen to waive legal counsel, so you're stuck with me. So 59 Old Colony is, as you may or may not know, at the end of Old Colony towards Beale Street. It's a, it's an existing two-family house. It is right next to Gavin Foundation's, a care facility, and a single-family house on the other side. Right now, it's operating as a two-family, and my client would like to add a third unit to the building. It's, the site is in Res B. It's approximately forty-two thousand, forty-two hundred and seventy-five square feet. There are two units, a two-bedroom and a four-bedroom in the existing house, living area about twenty-one hundred square feet.
Did you say that again? There's two units, one four-bedroom, one two?
Yes.
Okay.
So six beds currently?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the plan is, it has a detached garage, which we plan on raising, putting in addition and connecting it to the existing building. This before and after site plan shows the existing layout, the existing home, both existing nonperformance and a freestanding garage. And what we're planning to do is keep the main home and build a new garage for the unit above and make a connection to the unit two. This will add approximately twenty-one hundred square feet to the living area.
So we're in, now we're in about four or five thousand square feet total?
How much, how much is it? Not four or five, how much is it? Do you have any idea?
Yeah.
I mean, because we're into 1.1 now.
The units are...
Twenty-four hundred, sorry.
Twenty-four hundred square feet. New space.
Hmm?
Twenty-four hundred square feet of new, new area, twenty-one hundred square feet of the existing.
Twenty-four, forty-five hundred, okay.
Yeah.
You have the right number, huh?
Sure.
Four or five.
Yeah. This, this drawing shows the new layouts, the existing attached garage and a separate foyer to get you up to the new unit, basically an open plan on that, on that second level. Above that, on the third floor, there are three bedrooms plus a fourth. One of them relatively small, probably end up being an office or a kids' room. It's a relatively straightforward plan and elevation. We're just taking cues from the existing building. The ridge line is raised a little bit on the addition, so we're up at that thirty-five foot limit of the height. We're going to be using similar materials that are on the building now, clavers and, composite trim, double-hung windows, architectural shingles similar to what the house has now. We had thought about possibly raising the ridge line on the existing house. In a perfect world, we'd like to do that, to bring it all to the same height, but I'm sure it'll come down to costs, in terms of construction costs for the, for the, for I think that the, the final, the final plan with four bedrooms in the new unit and an open living space with a den is pretty much the maximum that we could get in this, in this particular site with this building. So at the end of the day, we'll have three units.
Ten, total members?
Ten of them. And two garage parking spaces and two parallel spaces on the property line. I want to emphasize again that we're within a tenth of a mile of the walls in T Station, so we're thinking that, I don't even know if the tenants there now have cars. I've seen one.
One car each.
One car each for the two tenants. So we don't think it's going to be taxing on the area of the street or the neighborhood considering the, the proximity to the T.
Personally, I think it's a little much of that lot. It's got a forty-two hundred square foot lot. You want four bedrooms added. I don't even have any questions, but I just think it's too big. I think we can shrink that. He wants a third unit. I have no questions. Any questions?
You know, I can live with the setbacks, the fire, the lot area falling, but the size of it might be correct, and the, you've only got four out of the eight requested parking, even though you are a tenth of a mile from the T.
Yeah.
With ten bedrooms, you've only got four parking spaces. I, I think your request is too large.
I have no questions at this point. Are we starting?
Is it bad?
You could have twenty people living there with four parking spaces, so I think it's too shot, too light on parking, too many beds for the parking available.
I agree. That's, I am, I feel the same way.
So looking at this without...
Redesign it.
Yeah, how about a redesign? Come back in four weeks? Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quillie motion for, uh, ten...
Eight.
Eight.
Ten, eight.
Ten, eight.
ZBA, matter 2424, Cody Chi, for a variance finding constructed that in third units existing two-family home on the premise number 59 Old Colony at Quincy, Mass., make a motion to extend to October 8, 24th.
Second.
On the motion, stand in all favor?
Aye.
Close. Some will further into tonight's agenda. One second. ZBA 2433, Eric Gals, for a variance to demolish the existing detached two-car garage erected, detached, twenty-nine-foot-tall, detached, two-car garage on the premises 205 President's Lane. The African representative here.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Eric Gals. I am a co-owner of the property at 205 President's Lane with my wife Jennifer Gals, and representing myself for this.
Did you take a note?
I did, yes.
Oh, you did? Okay. All right. Continue, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So the existing two-car garage on the property is in need of repair. We're looking to replace that with a three-car garage. I'm sorry, it was misprinted on that, but it is a three-car garage in the plan with a full second floor, which is what we're looking to put the variance for.
Right.
In this place.
What, what are we doing upstairs that you need a full second floor?
So I don't know if you've had the opportunity to drive on President's Lane in the wintertime, but you, if you've driven by our house, you would know it. There is a patch of ice at the end of our driveway almost every single day.
Is there a spring in there or something?
Basically, yeah.
I don't know.
No, our yard is basic, our basement is unusable. So the, the, anytime there's rain, it seeps up through the bottom of the, the basement floor, and we're looking for a good amount of storage.
You don't play there? What's the problem?
I think it's the, I assume, not being a geologist, it's from the high granite, there's a few places where you can see it come up to the surface of the ground.
What have you done to try to fix the basement as far as keeping it for, so you could use it?
We do have a sump pump.
Mm-hmm.
And we've priced out a difference between doing a second story versus a full, like French drain or another water approach, and that would be much more expensive to, to simply.
Well, it's a beautiful piece of property, but...
Thank you.
To me, a twenty-nine-foot garage is, I mean, you've got a gorgeous property. It's beautiful up there. It's really, really beautiful. If you have a twenty-nine-foot garage there, compared to putting money into the house and have it fixed right downstairs, so you wouldn't have water. Believe me, I live in the top of a mountain down in Housneck. Probably the second highest house down there in my basement to get water, and I had it. It wasn't fun. I, I know what you're going through. Matter of what you do, it just seems like you get dampness.
Yeah. We did try to, to design in a way that matches the aesthetics of the house, so that it wouldn't look out of place and would feel correct with the, the neighborhood.
Couldn't you do something with the roof, something, bring it down a little bit? I mean, it's just twenty-nine foot. It's like, it's like another house back there, what it's going to look like.
You're looking for, you'd like a redesign with a...
Well, just something, I mean, storage. You're going to put storage in there, right? So...
Yeah, get nine-foot ceiling, bring it down to eight.
Bring them down, plus bring, you know, I mean, it's got, you know, you know, it's a beautiful piece of property, really, believe it. I really, I was impressed when I went up there.
Thank you.
Nice, beautiful house, big house, big lot. I don't know. I'm not totally against it, I just, it just seems like it's going to look like another house is there instead of a garage. That's what I'm worried about, the look. I don't know. Any questions?
Not at all. So the unit is part of sixteen-foot?
Yeah, sixteen-foot garage, wants twenty-nine thirteen, so cut, make it, and we haven't been snowing for years, I don't think we're going to get mows and man like we have, so maybe do something with the roof, cut the pitch down to where we've got to cut it down to.
Yeah, it comes a hundred percent higher than they, you were...
Yeah, right. Pretty close to that, right?
Be back, prefer it be cut back.
It's Barry?
What is your proposed use for the second floor? No, no water up on the second floor of the garage?
No, we don't plan to that at the second.
No, just plain storage. Not that.
I agree with the sentiments. It looks like a second house, so if it was brought down in height.
Somehow make it a...
I think you could still make it very usable, on the garage height and the storage height.
Great, great. Same comment.
Long way to take it, redesign that, maybe and get it back to us.
I'll have to go back to the architects. Last time I asked for a turnaround on this, it was a couple weeks.
All right. We have October eighth, October, October...
October eighth, October 22nd. Right now, we have...
The eighth?
Two items on for the eighth that are old buildings.
All right, so make it three. Let's, let's do the eighth, because it, it's a garage. Ain't going to take a lot to sit and get that done. We can go right to it. Any motion for, uh, ten?
I'm sorry. Would you be open to still a variance, just not at the same level, so we can get a good amount of storage up there, not at sixteen feet, but not at the proposed height?
Yeah, cut, chop it back. I mean, just shrink it. Make, make the pitching roof a little different. Make, make it small.
Shrink down the height, but no one saying no to a second story.
Right.
But shrink it down.
It could not look like a house.
All right. All motion, please, ten.
ZBA 2433, now Eric Gals, variance to demolish the existing detached two-car garage erected detached twenty-nine-foot-tall, attached two-car garage on the premise number 205 President's Lane, Quincy, Mass., make a motion to extend to 10, 8, 24.
Second.
On the motion, stand in all favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Further under. We got two. ZBA 2439, William Schwartz, a variance for special permit flood plan to demolish the existing single-family home, construct a single-family dwelling in the flood plan compliant on the premises number 11 Bethel Terrace, Quincy. The African representative, councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, I'm Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of William Schwartz, Bill is the owner of the property at 11 Bethel Terrace, and making this proposal to you tonight. Just a little bit of background on this. First of all, Mr. Schwartz lives directly across the street from this, this house, and he, like the others neighbors, have watched this house become more and more deteriorated over the years after, after it was abandoned by the prior owners. It was a...
That the one where the front is on Bethel, but the address is on this street?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's basically...
Forty-six Northfield or something?
Yeah, it's right between Northfield and, and Bethel.
Yeah. Yeah, it was kind of weird when I'm looking, going, fifty-nine, how, where's eleven?
Yeah, the, the house sat vacant for years. It became more and more deteriorated. The, the ongoing joke that Bill and I had was that it was the haunted house in the neighborhood, so everybody felt the same way, that it needed, something needed to happen. And Bill took it on himself to purchase the home so that he could kind of keep the neighbor's interest at heart when he moves forward with the development, because, because anyone could have come and bought the house and built whatever they wanted to. So he didn't want that to happen, so he was the, the neighbor that was able to, to take advantage and buy the home. The property's a, a small lot. It's only three thousand three hundred ninety-nine square feet, and it has this two-and-a-half story, single-family house on it now. When Bill talked to me years ago, a year and a half ago, he talked about the, the idea of actually tearing the house down before he had a chance to even design plans for it. So as a result of that, we reached out to Jay Duka when Jay Duka was the commissioner, and we spoke with Jay about the concept of, of preserving the non-conforming nature of the site. The, the house that, that sits on the site right now, if you look at the site plan, basically has no setback in the rear.
Zero.
So it sits right on top of the home that, that's next to it or in the back of it.
I think it'd be over the line when I was looking at the...
And I think there were additions made to the house over the years where it was just expanded and expanded on the, on the parcel, that it took up essentially the entire parcel. Had very limited parking, et cetera. And so Jay, Jay was more than willing to work with us on a finding, and he granted a finding, because at the time, it was Mr. Schwartz's idea of just simply rebuilding a home, all in conformance with zoning. When he, when he started to prepare his plans, however, what he learned about more so was the flood plan, and that he had to raise the house, and therefore it eliminated the lower level, you know, a place that could be for a playroom or something else for, for a big, a nice family. So he, he, he looked at the possibility of utilizing the attic space as maybe a playroom for, for a family and expand that, get some natural light in the building. So when he did that and proposed a dormer on the front of the house, what it, what it did is it, it caused that to become a, a true third story. Hence why we're here before you tonight. So the proposal is essentially demolish the existing house, construct a new house on the site. The architect's here as well. If you want to just show the, so this is the exist, this shows the existing. You can see the existing house with the addition, and, and they just add, as I said, they just added it, added on to the house over the years.
From the ink or what?
Yeah.
From the ink or what?
I probably called him to the lake and said, oh, by the way, and he's plans...
I got mine, it was bad.
But the, but the new home that's being proposed, as I said, actually created setbacks where setbacks didn't exist. So in the back of the house, as, as, as being pointed at, there's now setbacks in the rear of the property. The house itself, and the footprint of the house itself, is actually smaller in, in size than the existing footprint. This has a one-car garage and a, and better parking along the side of the, the garage, so it provides parking off-street as opposed to the other house that had very limited parking. I'm going to let the architect go through the plans in more detail in a minute moment, but I just wanted to kind of give an overview of what, of what's being proposed. We've already appeared before the Conservation Commission as is required by the flood plan, and we, and an order of conditions was obtained. So this new proposal is actually creating a house that actually has less setback variances. It has, it has compliance with the flood plan, which I think is a huge improvement, but in order to provide some living level in that third level, Mr. Schwartz is proposing a full dormer as opposed to, you know, smaller, dark house dormer.
I doubt he would have put a couple, a couple split up that dormer in half, but...
And that, and that's what he looked at doing, but I think based on his architect's advice, it really created some nice space and some nice lighting in there, and, and not for nothing, there's beautiful views too of the marsh and the water in that.
I know, but he still has thirty-two hundred square foot lot, thirty-three hundred square foot lot he newly bought, so that's how I...
I understand, but I think this is going to be a improvement over what exists today.
I get it, no question.
Want to take a moment just to kind of walk through this, the plans, maybe the floor plans?
Sure, yes.
Just identify yourself with it.
Yes, I'm, I'm Hernandez. I'm a senior designer, the architect, my partner at Arion, who's got the drawings, but I work together with him. I've worked closely with Bill, the owner, for the last year, on the plans, and, and basically we're proposing as a single, a single family, kind of upside-down layout where we have the bedrooms on the first floor, a three-bedroom come in to the entrance here, and then to the right you'll have a single-car garage, and then three bedrooms on the first floor. The primary bedroom would be along with the nice street towards the marsh. The reason for that is, again, because of the living area being higher would give a better view, so we're going to put the living area on the second floor, which is the next plan here. Come up the stairs to the second floor. The typical plan nowadays, we have a level floor plan, bathroom, office, dining area combination, and then stairs again that lead up to the upper level. On the right side here of the garage would be an open deck area to, you know, for, and for entertaining, obviously, being on the second floor, having something close to you and entertaining in that, on the middle of the level. From the upper level, we come up the stairs and, again, we have your typical cable roof with an open floor plan. On the front side of the house, we would have an intact dormer, and again, the, the toilet is, as you said earlier, creating space up here on the, on the upper level, and then we also feel that a little balcony area where, again, the primary view of the house is. It's, it's, the design is obviously, isn't that an ideal, beautiful area with a beautiful view, and is trying to maximize that view of the house. Up on the upper level, we have a half bathroom, office space, and as you can see over here in the plan, too, we did accommodate, it will not be done now, but the possibility of a future elevator, so that anybody who wishes to purchase the house will have accessibility to all floors, from the ground level up to the, the third level. The ground out would just be closet space that would be created, and then in the future it can be opened up and provided to an elevator. Questions, sir?
Oh, it's the thing, they just put the zama...
I don't know what they're, they're upset, but basically, we have a front elevation here showing the proposed front elevation of the dormer. Again, Jake will move this here as the proposed balcony area, the dormer facing the water. This opposite side here is, we have here the rear elevation, we have a small dormer for the half bathroom, it's a basic, sort of roof with a couple of skylights. Over on this side is the actual, the right side of the elevation of the house, which would have the garage, single-story garage in the back above. This is the front porch to the house, and then this here would be the future elevator. Right now, it would just be closet space. This would be access to the back area, over the garage area, and then the garage would have two windows, just about the plenty box, and then this here, the windows.
Where are your three parking spaces?
Barry, hold on a minute, hold on, hold on, hold on. Go ahead.
The, this here is the opposite side, it would be the left side of the house, which shows the balcony facing the water again, and then basically cable, one windows, and then the dormer on the back, cable dormer, and then the dormer on the front, with the intact dormer style.
This plan shows the parking, there's a driveway into the garage, and then we added a long driveway on the side of, on the side of the garage, so that provides additional parking. Actually, it could provide, I think, other three additional spaces.
Are you putting, are you putting paybies in there, or is that asphalt?
You're going to do the...
I mean, we're, we're in a parking here.
You're going to do paybies on the driveway, or you're going to asphalt? Do you remember?
I believe...
Name and address for the record, please.
William Schwartz, fifty-sixth month of that.
Okay.
I believe, at consultation, I've been high press, the proposal is asphalt, put it by consultation as I could.
Well, I didn't ask that. I asked you what you're putting in this.
Asphalt.
Asphalt. Thank you. Yeah. Now, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even... Number one, the house is, on a small lot like that, really big for that lot. And then you got a third floor, now you're putting in asphalt. You know, soothe us a little, give us something back here. I mean, you get a full dormer on the third floor, you get, you...
The third?
Lot line to lot line. He bought a lot, and I understand, I really do understand the whole thing. He wants to get the max out of it when he sells it, I get it. But, you know, here he is asking for these things... But, you know, here he is asking for these things, that it's just a PC bought and he's gonna just sell it to make money. And the neighbors are gonna live with it and it's lot line to lot line. I get it, what he's got there, he could have rebuilt lot line to lot line.
With all due respect, Mr. Akins.
Can I finish, please? So what I'm asking, if he can sit there and put pavers everywhere and make sure we get drainage everywhere there because there's, I'm telling you, that place is brutal down there. It is brutal. I mean, the road ain't even paved, so, you know, let's look at, that's what I'm looking for myself right now. And I don't know what else other people looking for, but those are just my questions and they have been answered, thank you. You have any questions?
I was gonna ask the same question, whether or not asphalt is a favor, so. And, and Mr. Schwartz is agreeable to using pavers?
Thank you.
Green space anywhere?
Well, it's, again, green space is being created where it wasn't before. A little bit of space kind of all around the back and on the side, um, and also on the driveway, on the driveway.
The house is like right on the lot line all the way, house to house down there.
Right, that's what I was looking for. Where there is no construction, probably.
No, but, but don't, no, I think what Mr. Akins is saying is that the existing house took up the entire lot line. And it actually was all the way up, actually over the property line here. So there was very, very, very limited green space in the back, we're creating that now with the new house. Um, and, and by the way, this asset's been maintained for years, but there's additional green space along here and maintaining the green space there as well. Um, the only thing, and Mr. Akins, and I, I understand your concern about the size of the house, but the only reason a third floor here is being created, the only reason is because the knee wall caused by the front dormer. That's it. The house, the, the pitch of the, the roof won't change with the, but even if there were different style dormers.
I get that.
So the height really, it's kind of a misnomer?
No, I get it, it's just, it, it's a third story.
It's a, it's, it's a third story only because, as we talked about, the knee wall is four feet.
Seven feet, you could just do it, right?
Cause the knee wall is four feet because it's a large, a large shed dormer, that's the only reason. So what I'm saying, and by the way, that's on the Bethel Street side, which is the waterfront side where it won't affect the neighbors in the rear.
Oh, it's just gonna affect him.
Just him.
Right, right.
Just him.
No one else.
Cause he lives across the street?
No, there's no one else, I get it.
Uh, but so I.
I do get it, I get it, believe me, I get it.
The request here is very, very limited is what I'm saying, we're not asking.
Mr. Duca, go to the letter, I saw that.
Thank you.
Ms. Barry, you're up, anything?
Uh, nope, I'll settle on the parking.
That's good, thank you.
Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call, please step forward, name and address for the record, please. Can you take them out for dinner?
Yeah. Yeah, right. Good evening, my name's Doug Minz, I live at thirty North Field Avenue, this three houses up from the proposal. Uh, I've been there since nineteen seventy-seven, uh, the house is deplorable. The former owner was flooded in twenty-eighteen twice and they just walked away from it. So I think it's a, a real improvement for the neighborhood, it's gonna clean, clean up that corner and it'll be good for everybody.
Everyone's pulse will be worth more money.
Right, so we can pay more taxes.
Oh, yeah, maybe, yeah.
But, and I, as far as the dormer goes, it's, like you say, it's gonna face his house.
Right, I.
And face the water, it doesn't affect any other neighbors.
I get it.
At all, you know, and I think it's a huge improvement and it'll just.
See, I got pavers out of it.
What's that?
I got pavers out of it.
You did, yeah, yeah, well, that's probably a better idea, but thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the letter, please? Also to look back.
William Spillman, I live at seventy.
No, that's all right, wait a minute, wait till you get up, because we got a microphone there.
Okay, William Spillman, I live at seventy-four Lynn Street, which actually, from my living room window. Sorry?
Yeah, go ahead.
From my living room window, I, uh, I'm basically here to support Bill and his idea and the project. And from my living room window, I face the area, the haunted house as we call it now. I face that area and, and believe it, it's just definitely gonna be an improvement and everybody I've talked to feels the same way. It's gonna have more, I mean, it's just a big ugly place on the corner.
Yeah, it's horrible, and it's over the neighbors yet.
Yeah, so.
I mean, sooner or later, watch where she talks like that's brutal.
So I think it, I echo that it will be a definite improvement for the neighborhood and everybody that I've talked to feels the same way, so. Uh, I just wanted to be here to support Bill.
Thank you for taking the time out tonight to come here.
A lot of other neighbors could have made it to it, we didn't want to crowd.
Crowd it up, is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Please step forward, name and address for the record, wait till you get up here because there's a microphone up here, we need you to speak into so we get it right when we write.
Hi, good evening, my name is Janice Boyd and I live on thirty-sixth Lynn Street and the haunted house is scary.
So crazy, man.
It's just gonna bring rats and whatever, but, um, I'm all for this here, beautiful house coming on here. And I just think it'll be a compliment to the neighborhood and I think it'll complement Bill's house where he is now. And I personally don't see anything wrong with it going there, I just think that it would be a really nice addition to our neighborhood.
Thank you for taking the time to come here.
You're welcome.
For anyone else, please step forward, name and address for the record, please? Counselor, you have a cookout? You have a cookout down there? You have a cookout with the crew?
I have, I should, I might now.
I might, yeah.
Come up with anyone? Jim Quigley, I live at twenty-four North Field Ave and I'm in no way opposed to this.
Right.
But everybody else say it, I agree with them, it is a nice law. I think one of my biggest fears is somebody trying to squat in there.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean, being empty for so long.
Even critics.
Yeah, well, I'm sure. I'm sure they're there now.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, I just wanna speak for Bill, he's a good man and I think he's doing a wonderful thing for the neighborhood.
Thank you very much, thanks for coming tonight.
I'm Catherine Quigley, I live at twenty-four North Field Ave and I a hundred percent support this project. It's a privilege to have Bill as a neighbor in our neighborhood and add to the beauty of where we live, so, um, thank you.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah. Anyone else? Second call? Third call? Counselor? Trying to get you out of here.
No, Dave McCarthy, what he, he wrote, well, one counselor, um, fully support Bill, um, as everybody said, that house. It's a complete in two thousand eighteen and, uh, Bill had spoken to me a few years back and he had definitely had interest in, in doing it. And Bill's one of these guys also who, as you indicated, chairman about pavers, he's environmentally sound.
So, um, you know, whatever goes up will be a, uh, a good addition to the, um, to the neighborhood and, uh,
I'll try to keep Doug Minz's taxes down after it goes up.
Yeah, I don't know about that. All right, I have a letter here from the D C W, I could give it to the record.
To Martin Akins, only for appeal from, Mr. Sanning, civil engineer, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, eleven Bethel Terrace. We review the submittal to the above referenced project and our comments is as follows. Number one, upon completion of the project as built plan showing all utility, building footage, reference bounds and benchmarks defined the total site facilities. Runaway needs to be submitted along with the digital file, the as-built plan shall be stamped and signed by professional land surveyor or professional engineer. Elevation certificate should also be submitted if the property is in a flood zone.
Call it probably here and close, or anyone opposed to run the side? First call? Second call? Third call goes? No, I just, uh, I mean, it's a beautiful house and, you know, it took them a few years even to get the title for the property, I understand because.
You got paid.
Got paid. Oh, I think it'll look nice down there, I mean, you know, you get a beautiful house and then you win it. You're in a flood zone, you get asphalt, I mean, it's just, to me it don't mix, but anyway, I'll be voting in favor, I think you did a good job, really good.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
Quite likely.
Have a motion, please?
Z B A twenty-four thirty-nine, William A. Schwartz, reverend, special firm at flood plan to demolish the existing single family home. Construct a single family dwelling that is flood compliant on the private numbers, number eleven Bethel Terrace, Quincy, Massachusetts. With the provision of pavers and no asphalt, make the motion to accept it.
Second. Under motion, standing all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, some will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Reverend, uh, we got Z B A twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four forty. Twenty Patrick Foley, reverend, finance converting office building after seven apartments with nine parking spaces, explains with the road in Quincy, house will air up.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Patrick Foley, business address two sixty-five Willard Street, and the attorney for the project here tonight. I'm joined here today by Brian Donahue, who's our architect. I want to preface this presentation by saying for the last month, last couple months, we've been working with the planning department, the planning board. Um, and through that whole process, we were able to get a positive recommendation from the planning board and approval, uh, I'm sorry, positive recommendation from the planning department and approval for the planning board. During that time as well, we've had numerous conversations with Counselor McCarthy and as well as the applicants has had met, uh, conversations, uh, with many of the neighbors, uh, about what we were looking to do there. Twenty Whitney Road, which is right off of Hancock Street and right outside of Quincy Center, sits on eight, eight thousand six hundred and forty-three square foot lot. It is located in the business C zoning district of the city. This is a very unique street. This is the first house that you see when you pull out of Quincy Center, coming off of Hancock Street and coming right onto Whitney Road. Uh, when you step in front of the house and you look out, you are forty yards away from being right on Hancock Street and being able to cross the street and go right to the Quincy Center train station. Um, when you look at the building now, if you didn't know any better, you would assume that it was just another one of the single multifamily homes that is on the street and that, that was true a number of years ago. Um, it used to be a residential, uh, dwelling. Um, right now, though, currently, um, this building houses nine offices. Uh, these offices have a conference room, a meeting room, there's a kitchen, multiple bathrooms and a storage area in the basement as well. What the applicant is seeking to do here tonight is they are seeking to convert those nine office spots to seven one-bedroom and studio apartments with nine parking spots. Um, going between the size, between five hundred square feet and a thousand square feet. With the proximity to the train station, these are, these units will be geared towards commuters. Um, at eleven seventy Hancock Street and twelve hundred Hancock Street, which is about a hundred yards away, uh, from our property. You know, there's gonna be about two hundred u, two hundred apartment units going in with over two hundred parking spots. So the parking ratio they have there is very similar, um, to what we, we were proposing to do here tonight. As well as having that proximity where we're gonna be, you know, marketing towards a commuter minded tenant. Um, I just want to add, this building at its height had nine offices. These offices were all occupied by sole practitioner professionals. You had lawyers, um, architects, engineers, accountants. These professionals also would have staff or a secretary as well as clients coming in and out of these offices all day. Uh, needless to say, uh, park would be very tight here. Um, this property never had a parking plan, they never had assigned parking. Um, so you can imagine what it would be like with, um, nine offices, staff, clients coming in and out all day. On a busy day when this building was at its peak, it was probably a nightmare. Um, so we believe this proposal, because of the proximity to the train station, um, and being studio one-bedroom apartments, will actually lessen the burden of traffic, um, that is gonna be coming upon this property. As well as for the first time, actually having dedicated parking, um, to the building as well with seven spots outside and two in the back. Uh, I also want to add, since COVID, these type of offices for the sole practitioner, um, have become few and far between. With the advent of people working from home, um, it just doesn't make sense for a lot of our small business people anymore. Um, I know down the street by Fowler House in Central Middle School, there was recently, um, a project where it was half commercial at the time and half residential studio apartments. And because those weren't being utilized, they were able to switch that over, um, to residential apartments as well. Uh, before Brian goes into detail about the design of the building, there's just two points I want to add, uh, before I turn it over to him. Um, number one, when the applicant, um, looked into taking this project on, um, they really wanted to keep the structure of the home. It really fits into the entire neighborhood, it's a beautiful home, just like many of the houses up and down the street. Um, so, you know, tearing it down was never, um, gonna be an option. Uh, and also, um, when you look at what he's looking to do, a majority of the work is going to be in the back. Uh, so it's gonna be about a fif- fifteen foot bump up the back, but even with the bump up, that isn't even gonna be triggering a rear, rear violation either. Um, so you're looking at a pre-existing width violation and a setback issue that's pre-existing too, that's not gonna be changing. Um, so I'm just gonna have Brian come up and just go over the details of the plans.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks, Counselor. Thanks, Counselor. Uh, again, uh, Brian Donahue, Donahue Architects, twenty-one McGrath Highway in Quincy. Um, so I'm sure you're all familiar with, uh, with Whitney Street, uh, this particular, um, former residence. Um, I'm afraid to say that I, I remember, well, not when it was a single family home, but I do go back and it was a real estate office where, uh, Fred Kylie and his partner back in the day and they, they operated out of this building, uh, probably twenty, thirty years ago. Um, and since then, it's been used as law offices and as Patrick explained, uh, different, different, uh, single, uh, practitioners. So, um, this is a, this is site plan, it becomes residence A on this property line, a single family house, this is a firestone, um, auto center. And right behind it is an eighteen unit condominium building. I, I think it's, it's important, what Patrick said about keeping the character of the building and that's what we've tried to do. Um, there are some ancillary additions that were added on to this building over the years, there are fire skeets in the back, some, some nondescript little bump ups. And this is the side entryway, so this, there's a shed in the back, this is really all just pavement right now. There's, there are a few, uh, buddies along the back, probably a couple of events. These will all be coming down, um, to make the plan work a lot better. So, from a general perspective, existing elevations showing the, kind of on site name, fire skeet, um, back areas of the house, which we think will improve the management. This is the, uh, existing condition. So this, 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 this sheet shows us what we're gonna be doing to square the building up. Right now, this back, this back, right where the shed is, this is seventeen, we'll be adding five feet to that and basically squaring the building on to get, um, better unit layouts upstairs. Um, we'll also be removing, reconfiguring the roof to get a third floor of living space. Right now it's a hip, as you may know, we'll be converting into a mansard where we can include some of the, of living space. Right now, it's really two levels of offices, the attic is unusable, there's huge storage, it's basically for mechanical space and storage as well. So the, the parking and landscape proposal is thus. Um, we're gonna maintain the, uh, front greenery in the back, we'll be adding some planning here and I get into that because we're gonna be talking about some of the feedback we get from some of the neighbors. So right now we have two garage spaces under the bill, under the new addition and we have seven spaces along the property line. What we've done to, to make this a serviceable type parking, which is really the way they've been using it for the last thirty years, to pull in diagonally, is to create back out spaces. So each space, and we've been through a couple of iterations of this based on feedback from the planning, uh, and the city traffic engineer, was to have back out space for the garage, these people pulling in, backing out and going. We moved these spaces back and green up the side of the Whitney Road elevation a little bit more. And so these spaces can all pull in and back out, not the ideal scenario, that's, it, it's worked for them. And we think it's a limited traffic for the residences that, uh, it won't be, uh, it won't be difficult. So we'll have seven units, nine spaces. The unit layouts are, um, relatively simple, first floor will have two, uh, two apartments and, and a lower parking area, a one bedroom and a studio. The second floor will have three one-bedroom apartments, and the, uh, the new third floor, which is built into the roof, will have, uh, one-bedroom loft spaces. So it's, it's a generous area, these, these units go from the smallest ones, about five hundred square feet up to a thousand. So there's a variety of sizes and configurations, so we think it, it maintains a certain character of the building that we're, we're trying to, uh...
And third floor, it's two, right?
Two.
Two.
Two units. Um, we've also tried to create a little bit of outdoor, uh, area for each, each unit owner. Um, up on the top floor, there's a couple of, uh, decks facing the rear. Um, I have another rendering of, of retrieving that out based on feedback from the neighbors. And, um, these two units on the second and first floor have full decks on, they'll be, they'll be kitchen. The floor elevations show new configuration of the roof. Um, we don't really, there are, there are two bays that we're utilizing that are existing. The, the main guts and bones of this building have been reused and reframed and, and put out obviously for the new energy code and, um, and all the, um, the requirements of, of local residents that dispose. So, what we're doing is probably, more than likely, doing new siding, the windows, and then creating this mansard roof for where, uh, those two units. So these, um, three-dimensional renderings show the final product with the, of the mansard roof, the, uh, the dormers that are injected into, into that, um, third floor, and the relatively stable character of the house that it sits here today. Um, and, um, we think it's a, it's a, it's a reasonable proposal, we think it's a, it's a good reuse for this building, and, um, we hope that you, uh, look favorably upon it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
On the, uh, the nine spots, who gets the extra two spots, and how's that work out?
Um, I, I, we haven't really discussed that, and I, I imagine that it would be, depending on who is renting the spaces, whether it's a one-bedroom, it could be one person, it could be two guest spaces aside, we haven't really...
But you're not gonna, you're not gonna rent those out, so...
I don't think...
They're either gonna be given, given to the people that are gonna...
Jay, no, no, this is Jay D. Wild, he's the owner, I don't, I don't think he's...
You're not gonna rent out, like, I, each one gets one, now I got two to rent to people.
No.
You know, guy lives across the street wants one.
Nope.
Every parking will be in hell, okay, that's, that's... Some guys are doing that now, you know, in spaces, and, you know, so I think it's crazy for the people that live there, and they don't even know what's happening. Yeah, that, that was my point, I think it's a beautiful building, and, and I think they're gonna do a nice job on it, it's, it's really pretty. Parking, right across from the T, uh, uh, you know, you get seven spots. I, I tried to turn around ten different ways there to not get turned around and get stuck, and I couldn't, so, uh, the way you did, I, I was up there. They probably thought some nut was in the parking, and it runs in somehow. But, really, I spent a while up there trying to figure it out, but I think you, you did a good job.
Thank you. If I could add one thing, I know that, um, Mr. Wild has met with the, the abutists in the rear, uh, the H G units, and they discussed things like the trash enclosure, um, screening of those decks up and continuation of that, uh, green line along the back property line, which he's agreed to, um, conditionally. So, we've really added this to the, this is happening really, um, within the last few days. So we sort of added a screened area to, to, uh, provide some privacy for not only the unit owners, but, but also for the people, uh, in the rear looking down. And, uh, extending the green line, uh, of trees along the back and, uh, and looking into a very secure, um, non, uh, odorous, uh, trash, compact, uh, trash, uh, situation back there.
Any questions?
No, I'm glad to save in the building, but not locking it down. Do you hope a specific landscaping design, I saw some of the pictures of what looks like you had, uh,
Yeah.
Large trees being installed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, you don't really have, uh, a planning list or anything to do with...
With the parking on there, yeah.
So, yeah, and out there, yeah.
Like, there, there's a fairly good, uh, hedge up against the house, out of the street line, there's a nice, uh, cast iron fence, which we're gonna be keeping and continuing around to this point. These would be new, fairly large, caliper-sized trees, which are gonna really soften up that parking, um, to this back there, so, okay. And, and, and we're also gonna be adding some, some greenery to this back property line.
Great, thank you.
That's... No questions.
Sure, who's there?
Uh, two questions, what is the width of these parking spaces, are they eight or nine-foot spaces?
Nine.
They're nine.
Nine.
Nine feet.
And what have you envisioned for bike storage?
Uh, we're talking, we're doing it potentially in the basement as well. Because, uh, the storage right down there with the offices, so we're just gonna keep stores down there for the, uh, unit owners and put some storage down there for potentially bikes, and you write the T side, the type of people we're gonna be marketing towards.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a very large basement area that's really undesigned.
What is the access to the basement from the outside?
From the outside, um, there's a door in the back rear property area that goes down into...
So if I'm a, so where am I, if I wanna ride my bike, where am I, how am I gonna get, get it in and out of the basement?
This is a fairly wide stair.
But you have to walk around, the driveway's on the opposite side, though.
Yeah.
I just think you should put some thought into the feasibility of people getting bikes in and out of the building. That's a big push now.
Yeah.
Sure.
True, you have to have a bike practice outside as well, seasonally.
I, I think it's great that people will, most likely, bikes are expensive, they're gonna wanna put them in the basement, but they're not gonna wanna traipse all the way through your yard to get to it. So, again, I would just think about true accessibility into the basement to make it workable so that it doesn't get junky on the outside.
Sure.
Thank you. So, Brian?
Uh, no, I think he's done a very nice job, I appreciate it, and, um, no screen between there and Sullivan Tire. They're putting anything in there, there's no...
There really isn't, there really isn't room.
Yeah.
We, we talked about that, but...
One foot there, right?
You know, talking in a diagonal, you've got little areas of green, but...
Nice try.
If you put up a wall, people are gonna hit it, if you put a fence, people are gonna hit it.
You're putting rocks in there, though.
There is a, there actually is a, there's a four-foot landscape on the firestone side, and if they, you know, if they put something along, it'd soften it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Top box.
Yeah, it's just kinda...
Be tied right to the end there?
Yeah. They do, way up there.
You put rocks in between the spaces, correct? Very nice. Thank you, is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Please step up, name and address for record, please.
Um, good evening, everyone, uh, my name is Ying Sha, and I'm a resident in the eighteen Johnson Avenue, which right is down.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And, um, here's the Samuel and Karen, we are also the residents of the, um, we are here to, um, e- express, um, a great concern of this project, that is, um, it generates a, a kind of privacy issue um, for us, because currently, these buildings use that office.
Are you in favor of this?
I...
That comes later.
No, that comes later, yeah.
So, no, you will speak later, I'll have a plan for you when you, when you're undecided. This is a people that are in favor of this is speaking now.
Oh, in favor?
In favor, you're not in favor?
Oh, oh, okay, so I'm in favor of this project.
Why?
Yeah, I am, now.
Oh, okay.
I'm, generally, I, I'm in favor of this project, but I do still have some other concerns that, can I...
Sure, sure, please, I th- I thought you were against the project, I was trying to put you...
No, 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 I do not against the project, um, so, um, my concern is, our concern is about the privacy issue, because currently, this is an office, and the employee in this office, um, you know, they work from normally nine to six every day, in the big days, and, um, so actually, they do not have the same occupying time with us when we live in the apartment here that is from eve- from evening to the morning, so we do not have any privacy issue here. This building, um, the, the rear side of this building is really close to our apartment, it's about a little bit more than fifteen feet, that is about the back walk here to the first row of chairs. So, um, and, uh, current, if, you know, if we change it to a, to a residential building, um, then the occupants of the two-bedroom shares the same occupied time, then the privacy issue comes. Um, I'm in favor of this project, I know, I, you know, this is already an old building, we need to renovate it, uh, we need to kind of use it well, um, better than this one, but I'm, I'm just thinking, maybe, is there any way that we can just, um, solve the problem that's of this, this privacy issue, um...
I mean, we have buildings that are ten feet apart, and, and...
Yeah, but that...
They are what they are, though.
That is definitely the old one, right, that is not the new construction. This is also new, not new, we understand that this is a renovation of that, uh, uh, existing building.
Trying to save the character of the building.
Yeah, which has already, uh, violates the, the, um, the general dimensional requirement, uh, we understand that, but, um, it changes from an L-shaped building to a square building.
Mm-hmm.
So, rather than the renovation, it would be a little bit more than, uh, 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 expansion, right? Because the, you know, the jet...
Squaring off the building, just that corner.
Yes, and the new portion mostly at the rear of the building, so that which, um, you know, give us a big concern.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Is there anyone else in favor? Second call? Third call? All of the part, hearing calls, they have a letter here from the DPW, they reviewed the above efforts project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Anyone opposed or undecided, second call? Third call, Counsel?
Thank you, uh, Dave McCarthy, Ward One City Councilor, forty-eight Whitney Road. Um, know the street very well, and I had a great meeting with, uh, Attorney Foley and his client, a month or so ago when they first started, and one of the big things that, that I, I didn't wanna hear was that house coming down.
Right.
I know it's business C, I know that street very well, has enormous homes that were all family homes slash public doctor's offices back in the day. And it's all changed now, you don't get big families on Whitney Road anymore. At least there's, there's one big family on Whitney Road. Um, but, um, for them to renovate it, uh, e- extend it, keep the, the pictures you see here, which looks exactly like it does now. Um, the only concern I had was the parking, and when they explained that the bump out was going away, uh, they had the, the, uh, the nine spaces, the spaces were adequate. There's fourteen feet now between the end of the space and the building, which gives them adequate, uh, space to pull out and make, make the turn, and also they have that, the bump out in the front that they've added, so they can take care of the first two. Um, I, I thought it was great, because, uh, that street, um, wouldn't be, uh, uh, a place that I would like to see, you know, a modern, flat-roofed deckel deal that would come in. Um, I know some of the neighbors behind were worried a little bit, but I think the solution here is, is this, and not the solution I just talked about, it would have been a knockdown in a, in a building that probably would have been, um, something that we would have wrestled with. So, I'm in, I'm in favor of this, and, um, these guys did a nice job, Brian, uh, and, and Patrick and company with, um, with getting this together and, and basically keeping it twenty Whitney Road, so I'm in full support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All of the part of hearing?
Oh, more questions?
Huh?
Um, just one question, um, why is the meeting for the people not in favor?
I already called, and you're not in favor, I asked you to come up.
Okay.
Is anyone here not in favor, wanna speak?
Yeah. I have already, I have already expressed my opinion, so, yeah.
Right, that's why I asked you to come later, I mean, you said no, I, I'm in favor.
Oh, there is no...
It's always time to speak here, everyone gets time to speak, and your concern is the building is too close because of residents. And they'll be there when you're there.
Yeah.
What could be there, maybe, is a big apartment building instead of that, you wouldn't want that.
No, definitely.
Or an expansion of Sullivan Tire.
Huh?
Or an expansion of Sullivan Tire.
Yeah.
Well, it cannot be a big apartment building, because, I don't know, is the side, is this, um, land of use, business or residential?
Business right now, I'm changing to residential.
Oh, okay. Then, yeah, then it cannot be a big apartment building.
They can build in downtown, you can't, right? Thank you. So, here we are, decision, I mean, I think there's plenty of room between them and the neighbors, it's, it's in a residence. I wouldn't wanna see what could be there, so, and I think they did a great job, I'll be voting in favor.
No, I'm glad to save in the building, it's a great-looking place. I'd hate to see a five or six-story flat, stucco.
Yeah.
You know, just a cookie kind of building, and both maintaining the look of this, I'm in favor.
Yeah, and I agree with that, and I think the alternatives that could be put there, that, that could affect you even more negatively than what is being proposed, so, I think that, all things considered on balance, I would be in favor.
So I got me a few looking at on the outside, yeah, right?
So, um, does that be...
Sure, sure, please.
Uh, I'm in favor, I like that it's small and one-bed units, which will reduce, you're not gonna see parties.
Right.
I think it's gonna be a commuter building.
Exactly.
I think it's a good fit.
You're going forthwards?
Yeah, no, I'm in, I'm in favor, I, I think they did a nice job, but, uh, going back to residences, always a good idea in a business, you know?
Uh, I know.
Not always, but...
Yeah, I know, hate to lose business, but you hate to lose, but, I know.
But it'll change again.
Exactly, exactly, which you could, probably, we might not see it, well, we might see it, but no, never know. All right, I guess we can have a motion, please?
ZB A dash twenty-four dash forty-five, Attorney Patrick Foley, for Varian's Inbound to convert office space building into seven apartments with nine parking spaces on the frontage. Number twenty, Whitney Road, Quincy, we make a motion to vote in favor, second.
On the motion, saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
The votes, some will, thank you.
Thank you.
Further on tonight's agenda, ZB A twenty-four forty-six, Attorney Patrick Foley, for Varian's to construct a two-tiered divot to one side of the existing structure and request to legalize living space in the garage on the frontage. Number fifty-one, Kent Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Patrick Foley, business address two sixty-five Willard Street in Quincy. I'm joined here today by Brian Donahue, who is the architect for the profit, uh, project. The property we're here to discuss tonight is fifty-one Kent Street, which is a two-family home in the residential B's district, which sits on eighty-three hundred square foot lot. The applicant has lived at this two-family home and raised a family here for well over thirty years. They're seeking to, well, there's two issues that we're here for tonight. Um, they're seeking to add a side addition, um, to the side of their home, as well as address a violation that came to our attention as we were filing for our zoning, um, back a couple of months ago. The first issue that I would like to address is the garage issue, um, about a living space and a, uh, illegal bathroom that's in there. Um, applicant got the approval to build a garage in two thousand and eleven. At the time, the Walshes had three young kids. Mr. Walsh would use the garage every night after work to finish doing work. He'd finish his work around eight, nine o'clock at night, he'd walk back into the family's apartment, he would shower, wake up the kids, make noise. Um, after this was happening, he did not, you know, just did not really think it out about coming to the city for permits and all that, he put a little bathroom, um, into the garage, a bathroom and a shower, so he could shower out there, walk back in, not disrupt his family. Um, as for a living space, um, that's in there, I went out there myself, I know Ms. Nugent from the building department went out there and inspected it. Uh, all that's in there is a bunch of storage and boxes, um, from living in the same place for over thirty years. Um, so that's what's going on over in the garage, um, on that property. Um, they're also...
But you're asking to approve it for living space now.
What's that?
You're saying it's storage.
We're trying to lea- we're trying to legalize...
But you're saying it's storage, everything in there is storage.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yet, you're asking us to legalize it as, as living space.
Right, we just want to take it out of violation, Mr. Chair. Um, and we just wanted to address that. Um, secondly, um, the applicant is seeking to do a side addition to the home, um, which will be fifteen feet. This side addition will not trigger, um, any side setback violations. Uh, the only violations that are coming up is a pre-existing frontage issue, um, as well as FAR will just slightly be over, um, what is required by zoning. Uh, Brian's just gonna come up and go over, um, the addition.
Uh, Brian Donahue, Donahue Architects, uh, twenty-one McGrath Highway, but, yeah, I'll keep this very brief. It's a, it's a small, uh, addition, I'll just, um, I'm not gonna address the, the... I'll just, I'm not going to address the garage issue because I'm not, I don't know the history. I don't know the history. I don't know the history. But it's a fairly significant lot, it's actually two parcels that add up to about eighty-three hundred square feet. So it's a good sized lot. The existing house maintains all setbacks except for the front. So our plan is to add fifteen feet. And I apologize, the land survey plan shows a twelve foot addition.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
We're going fifteen feet.
And then when you look at the three foot bump, and I'm saying, we're missing two feet here, where'd it go? Right?
Yeah. So it would be fifteen. So instead of that twenty point eight feet side yard setback, it will be seventeen. So it's three more feet, that's actually fifteen. I apologize for that, for not catching that early. So right now, it's a two-family. The homeowner lives on the second floor, and they rent out the first floor space. It's a two-bedroom apartment, living kitchen down the back. The petitioner lives upstairs right now, kitchen, bedroom, bedroom, and living space. What we want to be doing, and this is an access, accessible to pull down in the upstairs apartment of the homeowner. Existing elevation, basic colonial, digital move structure, very simple. So what we're proposing is the fifteen by twenty-six, so it's roughly plus or minus four hundred square feet per floor. Add it so eight plus a hundred in the attic because we're extending the roof framing as well. It's about nine hundred square foot of additional living space. What it does is on the first floor, it gives these folks a bedroom and a bathroom. Right now, they've got one bathroom in that level. So they'd be getting a new bedroom and a bathroom upstairs. Teresa and her family will be basically expanding the living space, new bathroom, and up to a loft area, which could be a kid's bedroom. And we'll put a new bathroom. So it's a relatively minor addition, I think, in terms of aesthetics. It's really, we're just continuing the roof lines, materials. This deck, this porch in the front, it wraps around the side right now, so we're just extending along the front elevation. Add a dormer to match the existing dormer. Roof, bridge wall, same height. It's really just an extension of the architecture that's there. Pretty straightforward.
I mean, the side yard, and you can't even see, you got to get out and climb around to even see what's back there. I know. I think that's great that they're going to expand the house and have more living space. The garage, I got a problem with it, you know. I'd love to see that torn out there, there's no living in the garage. It's not made to be lived in, it was made to be a garage, so...
Well, he's picking up another bathroom, I mean, what do you mean?
Yeah, I just want it taken, put back as a garage. I wouldn't vote at all for living space over garage. I don't have any problem with that at all. I think it's a good, the layout's good, it's making the apartments nice, you can plant park in the back there, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. It's adding much needed space to both units. But the garage thing is concerning. As far as the addition goes, I think it's nice.
I'm in favor of the addition, and I would agree with the permit to remove the garage construction that took place before.
Agreed. Addition is great. Removal the bathroom and the garage, and restore it as a garage.
Mr. O'Brien?
I concur.
I concur. Can I have a motion, please? Denied on the...
ZB A twenty-four forty-six, Attorney Patrick Foley. For variance to construct a two-story addition to the side in this structure. Request relief to legalize living space.
Oh, Jesus, wait a minute, I'm sorry, counsel? I didn't see him back there, Patrick. So I saw him earlier, and I says, "All right, I'll call counsel." And then all of a sudden, I'm looking at Patrick, I didn't see him.
He's got to speak up.
I thought you went with...
That was moral support for the counsel, my Patrick. James Devine, one seventeen Cross Street. I think you all know the neighborhood, Ken Street, Town Hill, very distressed absentee landlords. This property is extremely well maintained. It has some great ABDs right up against the area. So anybody in that neighborhood that's taking care of everything, I'd like to see that type of improvement. So I'd like to let you know I support it because there's been a few houses that have been renovated on that street. And every time somebody renovates a house and makes it look nice, it helps somebody else that comes to buy a distressed house and looks over inches. Well, they did it, I can do it, and it's a good thing.
What about the garage, Jim? You concur?
I'm going to dissolve to your expertise.
Thank you, Charlie. All of the hearing closed. Can we have a motion, please?
ZB A twenty-four forty-six, Attorney Patrick Foley. For variance to construct a two-story addition to the side in existing structure. Request relief to legalize living space in the garage on the premise number fifty-one Kent Street with the provision that we remove the bathroom from the garage. Make a motion to accept otherwise.
Turn it back into a garage, correct?
Yep.
Second?
On the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Hail, so move. Motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
On the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Hail, so move. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Foley.